Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Winchun Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, June 27, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would please just raise your hand to indicate so, and I see none. Thank you very much. First on our agenda, Selectmen's comments and announcements. Mrs. Lapointe.
I would just like to give the committee all the kudos in the world for pulling off the Battle of the Band Food Truck Festival. Can't think of the title. It was so well-attended, and not because of any effort, but I was questioning, is this going to go really well? Is it gonna...because people don't always attend the, you know, the music, the summer series, a lot, but, oh my God. It was such, such a great event. Everything was thought of, you know, there's only even more room to grow, and it was fantastic.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
None at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Salter?
None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
I want to agree with Danielle. What a fantastic event that was. I was really impressed, and I want to thank all the people who did show up to really make it what it was. There's also one other big event coming this Sunday. The Winchun and Winds Ensemble will be performing their last concert of the season. It'll be the Big July Fourth Bash on Sunday, July 3rd, 2 p.m. at the Unitarian Church on Central Street. So it's your last chance to hear this wonderful band.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening. So, public comments and announcements. Is there anyone who wishes to bring something before the board? And here, none. All right, we do have two public hearings this evening. Mr. Ward, would you get us going on the first, please?
Winchun Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing Transfer and Pledge of All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License. The Winchun Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. in the Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 109 Front Street, Winchun, Mass, on the All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store Transfer of License and Pledge of License of Shiva Convenience, Inc., doing business as Gateway Convenience, 670 Spring Street, to St. Chabel Convenience, Inc., doing business as Winchun One-Stop Shop. Tonight, you will find out that that has been changed to doing business as A1 Go Mart. Danny Jaeha, manager. Anyone wishing to make comments is encouraged to attend. Signed, Audrey Labrie, Chair, Winchun Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Pearlman.
Just bring their mic a little bit down and a little bit closer to you. That should be good.
That good? Okay.
I think so.
Again, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I represent St. Chabel Convenience, Inc. They're seeking a transfer, as you said, of the package store all alcohol license currently held by Shiva Convenience, Inc. for the premises at 670 Spring Street. The published notice was handled by the town. Mailed notice to a but is not required for a transfer of a license. St. Chabel's Convenience, Inc. is a Massachusetts corporation. Danny Jaeha is the sole officer, director, and stockholder of the corporation, and he will be the manager of the business as well as the manager on the liquor license. Danny Jaeha is currently living in Saugus, Massachusetts. Danny is a United States citizen, and he has owned and operated businesses for over 20 years. As the manager, he will spend at least 40 hours a week at the location. The business currently operating at 670 Spring Street is open seven days a week with hours of operation for the sale of alcohol, beginning at 8:00 a.m., currently ending at 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, yeah, through Saturday, and Sunday, their hours, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The new owner intends to begin the business with those hours. The layout of the store will be as per the floor plan that I submitted with my application. The owner and manager has been working and training with the current owners for a while now, and he's continuing to do it. In fact, he was just there now before we came over here. So he's familiarizing himself with the business and the laws relative to the sale of alcohol. Additionally, he has set up an appointment for tips training for himself and his wife, who might be out there sometimes working with him. So they're both going to be tips trained, and they will have that prior to assuming the operation of the business. He will obviously uphold statutory law and any rules or regulations that the town of Winchun may have that's particular to your town. I would respectfully request that the board approve a transfer of the license to St. Chabel's Convenience, Inc.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, comments from the board?
I really don't have any.
Nope. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this issue? And I see and hear none. If there is nothing further, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. If there are any other, any thoughts and comments from the board? If there are none, I will entertain...yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Daigle.
Could we just reference again the change to the DBA? It was going to be A1 Go Mart instead of what has been noted. So the motion would reflect that, please.
All right.
They did. I sent it to them. I sent it to you too.
So the motion to close the public hearing for the transfer and pledge of the all-alcoholic beverage package store license for the convenience store under the name A1 Go Mart located at 670 Spring Street? Would that be sufficient?
The motion that you just had to close the hearing was sufficient. It's the next motion to approve the license.
I beg your pardon.
I'm jumping ahead.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
Right.
My apologies. Thank you. Anything further from the board? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the transfer and pledge of the all-alcoholic beverages package store license application for the convenience store located at 670 Spring Street from Shiva Convenience, Inc., doing business as Gateway Convenience, to St. Chabel Convenience, Inc., doing business as A1 Go Mart. Danny Jaeha, manager, and to forward the application to the ABCC for state approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the request. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is posted for 6:40. I've got 6:38. I will entertain a motion to take 4.1 out of order. Constable appointments renewals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So there were two, when we were doing the annual renewals, the last meeting, there were two that were not prepared at that time, the constable appointments. The applications have been reviewed at this point, and fees have been paid, and I understand... are either Mr. Gonzalez or Ms. McNeil here this evening?
Gonzalez present.
Good evening. If you would join us, please. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board members?
No, just thank you for, you have already served since your last appointment, correct?
Yes, when I was appointed at the beginning of COVID, about three years ago.
That's I got.
It was a tough time to, you know, to get going, but slowly it's all falling into place, and I comply with everything I can to fit what the town requires, and I hope this time around will be a little more stuff to do, you know? But I maintain myself, training and learning the laws that are required to make sure this job is done the right way to give my town a good name.
We appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Lapointe.
I don't think it's necessary for me to disclose, but I am going to disclose. I did sign Mr. Gonzalez's application to us supporting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
Just so the public knows, that these constables have to be recommended by the chief of police in town, and Chief Walsh has recommended both of these candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, I will entertain a motion for Raymond Gonzalez's appointment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to accept the recommendation of Chief Walsh and renew the appointment of Raymond Gonzalez as a constable for the town of Winchun with the expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Second. Made and seconded to approve the request. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And for Kenneth McNeil, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to accept the recommendation of Chief Walsh and renew the appointment of Kenneth McNeil as a constable for the town of Winchun with the expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Thank you, Mr. McNeil and Mr. Gonzalez. All right, back to our second hearing. We have an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant change of manager. Mr. Ward, if you would, when you're ready?
Winchun Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing Change of Manager Issuance, Transfer of Stock, New Stockholder, All-Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License. The Winchun Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 6:40 p.m. in the Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 109 Front Street, Winchun, Mass., on the All-Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License of Tamlin Corporation, doing business as Carriage House Restaurant, 660 Spring Street, for a issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder, and change of manager. Proposed new manager, Joseph Furlong. Anyone wishing to make comments is encouraged to attend. Signed, Audrey Labrie, Chair, Winchun Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
A second. Sorry.
I don't have a motion yet. Do I have a motion?
I move to open the public hearing for the change of manager, issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder, for the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license of Tamlin Corp., doing business as Carriage House Restaurant, 660 Spring Street. Proposed new manager, Joseph Furlong.
Now, a second. Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Daigle.
Mr. Furlong does not seem to be here this evening. He has been having some trouble getting all the documents that he needs with the changes that the ABCC has requested of him because they've timed out. I was hoping he'd be here this evening with those updates. The board could consider his application. He has been before you already, with the condition that those documents have been provided. I can't upload it to the ABCC's website without that information.
All right, thank you. So, we have, it seems, two options. We can proceed this evening with a vote on this, with the understanding that should it be approved, all of the necessary documentation would be provided prior to the issuance, or we could push this back to another meeting. Sense of the board.
I think I would prefer...Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to postpone this item until such time all the information needed is gathered.
Thank you. Do, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to postpone. As I moved, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I apologize, I did that in reverse order. Is that acceptable still? Thank you. Okay, moving on. 4.2. There are some appointments that the board has to take a look at. There are, is the MJTC, the Montechusa Joint Transportation. I'm not sure what the C stands for. The NPO, Montechusa Planning, and MRPC, and then the MART. These require an appointment for either a member of the Board of Selectmen or a representative from the town. Thoughts and comments, Mr. Ward?
Madam Chair, unless somebody wants to arm wrestle me for this, I'll stay on as the MRPC.
The which one?
MRPC.
MRPC.
Planning.
Okay. And then, who previously held the MART one?
Mrs. Daigle, do you know?
The town manager.
Town manager.
Yeah, town manager.
And is he interested in continuing?
For the sake of continuity, I don't mind doing it, but I'm not super dug in on it either. So if anybody else wants to step up, by all means.
And the Montechusa Planning, who currently holds that one? The NPO? Is it also the town manager?
No, that one is Brian. Brian.
Brian, okay.
Oh, the NPO, I'm still the main representative, and then Brian is the alternate. Is that correct, Brian?
Mr. Crowder, would you care to join us?
You would have to designate me as the alternate for the NPO. I am the MJTC representative. I do attend both meetings. They're both exactly the same.
No, you would be the designate.
Correct. You have, the guys would have to label me as the designate, and then Mrs. Daigle could write a letter to the NPO listing me as the designate for Barbara Anderson. You are the main person.
Right.
You have a designate.
I think I'm curi...the only thing I'm curious about is who usually attends those meetings? Are they...
They're all DPW directors, or very once in a while, we'll get a town manager, but typically, most of the time, it's DPW directors or somebody in that format.
So does it have to go through a member of the Board of Selectmen?
It does. We have to appoint them.
Okay. Would you be willing to maintain that position with the designate of Brian?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Crowder, you're okay with being reappointed to the MJTC? I don't know if that would count as a...
Yes.
Thank you.
That was right.
That's Brian. I would be willing to take the MART position, considering my retirement, when I'm doing so much I can't imagine being retired, and I know that transportation in this area is sorely lacking, so maybe there's something we can move forward on that. So I'll take the MART position.
You just made the town manager very happy.
I know, I did.
A slight sigh of relief. Poker faces on, though.
So we do need motions. This is weird. Mine keep disappearing. Do you have the motions?
No.
Okay, can we do this in one motion, or do you need separate?
I can make, I have them. I have them up.
Okay, thank you.
But, so I'm sorry, who did...MJTC is...
Brian.
Barbara. I move to appoint Brian Crowder to the Montechusa Joint Transportation Committee for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mrs. Lapointe?
I move to appoint Brian Crowder as Selectman Anderson's Subregion One Designee to the Montechusa Metropolitan Planning Organization for fiscal year 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is it a three-year position? Could I ask that question?
Yes, it said three-year, so it'll be through 2025.
That's what it says on my spreadsheet. Right. On my spreadsheet.
It says it's appointing him as of this year, so then I think it goes three years from that date.
Okay.
That's my understanding in reading it.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, but I think her motion said 2023, and so just appoint him as my designate.
It did, because they were appointing him as of this year, beginning the term. So I could put, I could say, for fiscal years 2023 through, what is that, 2026? 25?
About 25.
23, 24, 25?
25.
Through the end of fiscal year 2025? Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the second with the motion, okay with that change?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. Next, we have the MRPC.
I'm sorry, who's the alternate? Rick.
For the MRPC?
Yes.
That would be Rick, again.
Okay, thank you. I move to...
And that's an alternate position?
Yes. I move to appoint Rick Ward to the Montechusa Regional Planning Commission alternate position for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And, Mrs. Lapointe?
I move to appoint Audrey Labrie to the Montechusa Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And thank you, everyone, for stepping forward for those. All right, we have no permit license applications this evening. We do have before us Boards and Commissions, 6.1 Winchun, Community Park Committee update. Good evening. Oh, what did I miss? My apologies. We have our typical list of vacancies. We have the Communication Committee, there's one vacancy. Cultural Council is looking for, they currently have three vacant, I'm sorry, 13 vacancies. The Field Viewer Fence Driver position is open, along with the...we have Library Trustee has one vacancy. The Open Space Preservation Appraisal, there is one Board of Selectmen-appointed vacancy, and then the zoning Board of Appeals, we have two alternate member vacancies. So if you have interest in any of those, please reach out to the Town Hall. Thank you. Winchun Community Park Committee update. Good evening.
Good evening.
The floor is yours.
So, a few Board of Selectmen meetings ago, Barbara said she thought it would be a good idea for us to come in and give you guys kind of an update, let you know how things have been going with us. So here we are. So tonight, the updates that we'd like to give you are on the merger of the Programming and Infrastructure Committees, the amphitheater, the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation Grant that we were given this fiscal year, our Disc Golf Project, and our Friends of the Park Initiative. So on May 9, both of our committees met and opted to merge back into one committee in order to have better communication and be able to work more closely together. It's also the first step in a larger initiative in the hopes of merging with the Recreation Commission to become one Parks and Recreation group. We don't have an exact deadline for that yet, but this is the first step. This is the letter that we submitted to Justin in the PowerPoint, and will consist of nine members. We currently have eight members, so we will have one vacancy. It is myself as the newly appointed chair, Jane Lapointe, Dave Romanowski, Don Bilado, Dylan Romanowski, Camille Hart, Deb Kane, and Deb Bradley. We'll just continue to report to the town manager and hopefully work on building more partnerships with other town organizations as we move forward in this process.
Good evening. Before I get into the amphitheater project, I'd like to recognize Tiffany for all the work she's done. Tiffany was one of the main persons responsible for putting on the food fest, the Food Truck Festival and the Battle of the Band, so thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks, Dave.
And she's going to make a good chair of this recombined committee. Amphitheater, we did a ground breaking a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, it had to occur because of the availability of Robinson-Broadhurst. It had to occur on a weekday, so there was not a whole lot of folks that were there, but we do appreciate the folks that worked, that did come, and we most certainly appreciate Robinson-Broadhurst for showing up and further recognizing this as a, as a project that they're going to support long-term. As far as the actual work goes, there's, there's some, since work has started, and we have people on site, the construction workers on site, the foremen and such, I'd like to, again, recognize them for the hard work they're doing, and everyone that's on-site working is going an extra mile to make sure that this project is a success. And that includes, not in a small sense, but that includes our DPW director, too, Brian. Brian, I'm telling you, he's a gem. We've got, we've got a gem with Brian, and want to thank him specifically. Back to the folks that are working on it, one of the things that they continue to mention is what, how, what's the word? How, how much they think that the project that we're doing, this amphitheater project, is going to continue, is going to become a vital part of Winchun and, and should, it'll be recognized region-wide, and Winchun will be recognized for having this amphitheater region-wide. The work that's being done currently... The work that's being done currently due to, we are due to pretty much have the project done this fall, probably October, early November. But it won't be open and usable until next spring because of the grass planting will be the last thing done. And we want to make sure that that's in and growing before we actually utilize it. But everything else in the, of the project will be done. Starting this week, they're gonna be pouring the footings for the stage area. And that'll be the first real visible portion of the amphitheater. If, if anyone is, has an opportunity to take a walk up there and look at what's been done so far, I mean, it's, it's night and day compared to what it was. And it really, it really is gonna be quite spectacular, I think. And going forward, I think the community as a whole is going to, if they don't already recognize it as a major, major part of Winchunen, they, they will when it's complete. So I think, I, 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 yeah, so I'd also like to, I was speaking with, with one of the Robinson Broadhurst trustees at the Food Truck Festival the other day, and he was very, very much excited about that, that too. But he was, we also had a chance to speak on the importance of making sure that we utilize the amphitheater wisely to make sure that we support and uphold our promise to the Winchunen community that it's their, it's their amphitheater to be used for community activities. But we also need to recognize that the park will not take care of itself as far as operating costs go, so that the amphitheater will also give us an opportunity to generate some operating revenue for the upkeep of the park as a whole and the upkeep of the amphitheater. With, with that all said, Robinson Broadhurst contributed some, some money this year to hire a part-time coordinator, who will be, one of her, one of his or hers responsibilities will be to look, look into how we go about booking talent and, you know, make sure that it's equitable for the whole community and make sure that Winchunen residents get to play a big role in it. And I think unless there's questions or comments, I think that's really all I've got to say other than, you know, thank you for everyone that's continued to support us to, to make this possible. Oh, I, I guess I could speak. I guess I got more to do. There is during construction, there, there is restricted access to the, to the, you know, the, the turnaround and where the house used to be and where the barn is and where the construction's going on. The road access, except for people that are working down at the construction area and who have to meet down there with the construction folks, is restricted now to the end of the, of the ball field. There's some orange markers down there as well as some cones and a sign, excuse me, a sign, I believe, telling people that it is closed and not to, not to go down those roads. And trail access, which used to be down in that area, is now up at the soccer field. You can go either direction, I believe, that there was a trail map up there, to get to those trails and to get through the observation deck down by the lake too. And so you can walk along the lake. Did I miss anything, Tiff?
No, thanks.
No? Okay. So I, I, I think that's it for my part.
Okay. So I know we've talked about it a little bit, probably last year, about a Disc Golf project up at the community park. We had a temporary hold on that to see how the amphitheater was gonna play out, what construction was gonna be like. But we've been able to kind of pick back up with that. We have a really avid community member, Christopher Tompkins, who is leading that with some other local people who are involved in the Disc Golf community to get three holes up and running this season. He's working with our conservation agent to make sure that that won't interfere with anything in terms of wetlands. We're currently looking at putting them, I think it's east of the soccer field, those three holes. And in total, over the next couple of years, it will be a nine-hole course. We, the baskets currently are gonna be funded by the, you know, the Disc Golf players here who are interested in it. Actually, I think Dave generously, generously offered to purchase one of them. The cost is fairly minimal per basket, so to get it up and running won't really cost the park too much, which is great. But it will be a great asset for us because it's multi-generational, it can be played year-round. A lot of the community who play Disc Golf, they tend to maintain, pick up on trails and paths to get there because they want to see it, you know, keep being able to be used. So that's a big help for us up there as well. But the other great thing about the Disc Golf, last point I have, is that it also offers other opportunities for us to bring in revenue with tournaments and things down the road. So it'll be another great, you know, addition to our park. We wanted to touch upon the Four Seasons Project, which is what we got a grant for from Robinson Broadhurst this year. It was a grant for $7,000 to help us ensure our year-round programming. As everyone knows, the park has no indoor location for our programming, so we're kind of stuck, you know, to the weather's, whatever Mother Nature decides. And you can see we have a few past events. We've had the holiday in December, evening hikes in February, art in the park in the summer. While summers are still easier, we still have to deal with rain. So things that we'd be looking to purchase to help ensure that we can provide year-round programming and usage of the park would be, you know, larger tents that we could set up, possible outdoor heaters to help in the cooler months, possible trail lighting while the amphitheater will be putting in lighting on the streets and parking if we want to do, you know, evening hikes or different things like that, that would be really helpful for us. But it will also help, you know, build those programmings that we are able to offer there, not just necessarily purchase the infrastructure to do so. But we're really excited about that and we're currently working on our goals and what that's gonna fully look like over the next month or so. We've been working over the last year to try and develop a Friends of the Park entity to help not only with, you know, fundraising, but also to help with getting people in to help with maintaining the trails, cleanups and things of that nature. Get people and getting the community to kind of feel like they're part of the park and that they feel like it's part of this town. And so that's been a really big group effort between the town manager, all of our committees working together. And so we've, we're working on that. We have most of the bylaws all written for that. But we have to work on a few other descriptions so that it's very clear for people what they might be getting involved in before they do so, because we all know how difficult it is to get volunteers, especially if they don't know what they're supposed to be doing. So we want to kind of also put a little plug out there for people to get involved. If you're interested in being on the board of our Friends group, that's great. We're looking for people to take on that. If you want to help with the Disc Golf project, you know, if, is anyone interested in volunteering to help maintain the park in terms of trail cleanup? Do people want to stay up to date on the programming events we're having going on? I know this year is almost non-existent at the park with the amphitheater going in, but still, we're working on, with our grant, working on what our programming will look like after that. And if you are interested in any of those things, you can contact us by emailing us at info@winchunencitypark.org. You can visit our Facebook park, Winchun Community, our Facebook page, Winchun Community Park. You can visit our website, winchunencitypark.org, or you can come into the planning and development office and speak with me personally if you want it in-person face.
Well, thank you very much. I will, questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward.
I have quite a few questions. First of all, I would like to say that the groundbreaking was a really nice ceremony and I got to meet all those Robinson Broadhurst trustees. There were a lot of them there. Not only there, but I followed them over to the library and went through the library. So they really have a commitment to this town. And we are very fortunate to have Robinson Broadhurst backing this town like they do. So I just want to thank Robinson Broadhurst again for everything they do. I have a disconnect here. The PT, Part-Time Recreation Coordinator slide says they're gonna help run the amphitheater, do a lot of this stuff. But the job description that I looked is clerical and record-keeping. That's all really it's pushing. I guess I envisioned this person more as a rec director-type person down the road. And this one looks more like it's just clerical according to the job description. So that's a disconnect for me.
Sure, and I think it's part of the intent, and we can dig into it more when we get to the item, but is that for now, a lot of it is going to be record-keeping, processing payroll, scheduling events, things like that. But I think as the position grows and as we can fund it more, it's gonna grow into something a little more substantial. So it made sense to kind of start at the basics and get the building blocks there and a good foundation, and then we'll build on top of it.
Yeah. Because I really believe as this grows, down the road, we're going to actually need a professional rec director in this town if we're gonna run all these events. So just keep that in mind down the road. The only other question I have is on the Friends. Is this gonna be a nonprofit Friends group?
Yes.
There will be? And so will members of your WPC be allowed to be members of the Friends also?
I'm sorry, will members of what?
Members of the Winchunen Parks Com- Commission be members of the Friends also?
No, we cannot.
Okay, because there could be a conflict.
Absolutely.
Usually the Friends have control of the money they raise and they offer it as they feel free for what they believe they want to use it for, to you. And so you really can't have that overlap. I just wanted to make sure of that. That's all I have.
All right.
Both very good points. Thank you. Thank you for bringing those up.
Anything further?
I do. Mrs. Anderson? All right. On your previous slide, I just want to say that I appreciate that you recognize that the Board of Selectmen have been very supportive. But I, I think that, I'm trying to figure out how to word it. It's been brought to my attention that past Board of Selectmen have also been very supportive in even acquiring that property, and some of them have been omitted. And so I just want to give a shout-out to everybody who's, who's been on the board and who supported the project. The second thing, I guess, what kind of challenges, what obstacles are you finding when you're working on this? What would be your biggest challenge?
Communication
Yeah.
comes to mind first. So that's always been a, something that we've tried to deal with, but have had difficulties trying to establish sound communication protocols and practices. You know, there's stuff on Facebook, there's, there's partial website, there's some phone numbers possibly, there's an email address, but I, I think we need to somehow, I think as, and, and I'm not sure if it falls on the committee or if it falls as a town function or possibly a combination of both, to get that established. And so people, when people ask questions, they have a specific place to go. And if the question's not answered there, then we get the answer and we put it up there as, in the form of an FAQ or something.
Sure, and keep it updated too all the time. That's hard. That's like a full-time job in and of itself.
And that's what's hard to get a volunteer to do that.
I know. It is. Anything else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I just have one more thing.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, one second. Was there anything else? If you come across a, a challenge, let us know, okay?
All right.
And, and yeah, and I, I think also communication with the board to come, you know, periodically, once or twice a year to let us know what's going on, because a lot of times people ask me questions, I have no idea.
Madam Chair?
One second, Mr. Ward first and then, all right, Mrs. LaPointe?
It's just related. When do you guys meet?
Currently, we don't have a set meeting schedule as we just reestablished as one committee. I believe our next meeting is July, I want to say 17.
I didn't need concreteness. My daughter's on the committee, and so, you know, she's relayed to me that perhaps there's some frustration because you feel that we should make more of an effort to attend some of your meetings, and I want to let you know that I hear that and I recognize that. So if you guys do get a set schedule.
We'll communicate it to you.
Yeah, and I'm not asking you to hold my hand, but it's hard to go check all the schedules, so if you don't mind sending us the information.
July 12.
Well, I'm sorry, I won't be doing any July ones.
And, and, you know, not just individual, but let every, let the, let the community know that you're having this meeting and-
Yep.
But again, that goes back to the communication issues that we're having, so, kind of like a catch-22.
It kind of is, yeah, I do understand that. Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I just have one thing I forgot. And like, I think all residents of Winchunen, I want this to be a success. And I know building it took a while, but the real work is, once it's done, getting the crowds out there. That's going to be the hard work. So I'm encouraging you for that opening, whatever it may be, that it is a big event that draws everybody from Winchunen in around. And I don't care if it has to be a big fireworks show on the pond. You need to get a crowd out there for the very first event. So make it big.
All right.
Make it big. Like the food truck. Get that crowd out.
Well, I was at the, at the groundbreaking and it's been, what, 10 years since we first started talking about that parcel and obtaining the parcel? It has been a long time, and to what Barbara, what you just said, some of us came on the board in 2015, which was seven years ago, so there was a lot of groundwork done prior to us moving in. So yeah, there's definitely kudos to the previous board as well. And then my only other thought is, as, as much as you can involve the youth of the community and of the area, there was on social media, this was a couple of months ago, maybe right about, just before the groundbreaking, and some people were complaining that, oh, you know, there are, there are all older people on these committees. And someone responded, well, older people sometimes tend to have more time and more experience. And I, and I felt like jumping on there and saying something like, well, darn it, you know, Guy Lombardo isn't around anymore. Otherwise, I'd invite him. But let's get the youth involved. And they, they seem to feel that everything that was gonna go on there wasn't going to be involved, the youth. And that's so important.
I'd, I'd like to address that, actually. Tiffany is the, is the chair of the committee. You know, we've got one of the LaPointe's daughters
Yeah.
on the committee. We got my son on the committee. So I think we've heard that and I think we've listened.
Good. Yep. Thank you.
Yep. And we'll continue to listen. Once we can communicate.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we-
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Deagle.
The Constable Ken McNeil is present this evening. Maybe we can just tell him that he was addressed and he was appointed.
Yes, it'd be, good evening, Ms. Yes, it'd be, good evening, Mr. McNeil. Would you get to come forward?
Hello, Linda, Town Manager, Board of Select Men and Women.
Good evening. Well, in your absence, the board voted to approve your reappointment. And we just love to thank you for your, for your service and your commitment to it.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say anything.
It's a, it's a pleasure to serve Winchandon, yeah, with love, you know. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the water and sewer asset management plan authority to file. Mr. Saltback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to hand this one off to our DPW Director, Brian Croto.
Thank you. Good evening. What would you like to tell us about this?
Oh, this is what we voted on at town meeting. Sorry, I had to catch myself up. We passed it at town meeting in order to do the asset management plan. Now the state makes you do more paperwork on the paperwork. So this just allows the town managers to enter into the agreement with the state in order to receive the $75,000 from the state. So it has, he has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen because that's his governing body.
And there is a request to read this into the record, so I will do so. Authority to file, whereas the town of Winchandon, after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of Winchandon Water and Sewer Asset Management Plan, CWSRF-7048, is both in the public interest and necessary to protect the public health, and that to undertake this activity, it is necessary to apply for assistance. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass. DEP, and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), are authorized to make loans to municipalities for the purpose of funding, planning, and construction activities relative to water pollution abatement projects. And whereas the applicant has examined the provisions of the Act, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), and believes it to be in the public interest to file a loan application. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town of Winchandon as follows, that the town manager is hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a grant, grants, and/or loan, loans, as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. That the purpose of said loan, loans, if awarded, shall be to fund construction activities. That if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs, which constitute the required applicant's share of the project cost. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the town manager on behalf of the town of Winchandon to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the town of Winchandon for grants and/or loans, as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the town in connection with the Winchandon Water and Sewer Asset Management Plan, CWSRF-7048, application as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. And next up, we have some year-end transfers. Town accountant has verified funds are available to transfer. The Finance Committee has reviewed and approved these transferred, transfers at their June 22, 2022 meeting, and now they are before us this evening. We do have a spreadsheet that's been put together for us. Does the board wish to do these individually?
I think we have to.
I'm in agreement. So what I'd like to do, if the board is okay with this, I will just read the department requesting, the name of the account to be transferred from, the name of the account to be transferred to, the amount and reason. And we should be able to get through these without too much time expended. So first one, civil defense. From civil defense certification to civil defense miscellaneous, the amount of $200 to cover expenses. I'll entertain a motion.
Stop moving. Go back. There we go. I'll make a motion to transfer $200 from the civil defense certification.
If I may, I think you, just a motion to approve the transfer?
No, I think you better use the names, not the numbers. We used to go with numbers years ago, and we said, you don't have to. You just go from this account to that account and approve it.
I kind of feel like you might be able to say as presented, but I'll confirm that and maybe out of an...
I think, I think that's, it's not too much to just go from civil defense certification from civil defense miscellaneous, $200.
I believe the Finance Committee only used the titles. They didn't use numbers when they approved. They were just using titles.
Well, you used the dollar amount, but not the, not the account number.
But not the account.
Right.
Right.
We don't need to.
I made the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So if that's the case, there's no sense in me going through it first, is there?
No, not really.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion on the Collector Treasurer, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to move $2,950 from the Monty Tech Assessment Account to the Collector Treasurer Department Head to cover vacant position.
Can I second that for discussion?
All right, we have a second for discussion.
I'm just curious, only because there is vacancies in that department, so I'm wondering why we need to move money into that account.
That's a great question. So in the absence of a treasurer, we do have an interim treasurer in place whose rate is slightly higher than what our treasurer's was, just due to more experience.
That's I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, number three. No, we got a vote on it. Oh, beg your pardon, because I was only a second.
Chomping at the bit.
Yeah, really. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I make a motion to approve transferring from Community Development Planning Agent to Conservation Agent, the amount of $5,159.30. And this is to fund a change in staffing.
Can I second again for discussion?
Yes.
And again, I, just some clarification, as we lost our full-time conservation agent, picked up a part-time conservation agent. So I'm trying to figure out.
So we had made the change that office mid-budget year.
Right.
So the budget was already set up with the intention that that, the existing role of the planning agent slash/conservation agent would continue to exist. But where we broke it apart, there, there wasn't a standalone conservation agent role at the time that the budget was developed last year. So now that there is one, we're essentially peeling funds away from the combined role and diverting it directly to the part-time conservation agent that we have now. So the money shakes out the same, it's just a matter of making sure it's going to the right position.
Thank you.
All right, we drove a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next, from requests from data processing.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to transfer the sum of $5,500 from the Monty Tech Assessment Account to the Data Processing Software Support Account.
Can I second that again for discussion?
Yes, second for discussion.
Just to clarify, that the Monty Tech Assessment that we keep transferring from is because they are actually accepting fewer students?
That's a great question. So, and it's a little multifaceted. So part of it is the number that we build into our budget every year is based on a projection, but not based on how many students are actually going to walk in the door for the next year. So in this case, we budgeted a little higher. The expense came in a little lower. I'd also learned from Dr. Ward at the Finance Committee meeting last week, that Monty Tech had some additional funds from the state, and so as such, they didn't request as much from individual communities, although I'm not familiar with what the exact number is. So those two items combined resulted in a little bit of a surplus in that line item.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, we'll do a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a request from the DPW.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I make a motion to approve a transfer in the amount of $1,000 from the Highway Operator Account to the Cemetery Overtime Account, and this is to take care of a budget shortfall.
Second.
Thank you, made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Line six, the second DPW.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I move to approve the sum of $996 to be transferred from the Highway Operator Account to the Cemetery Labor Account, again, to cover a budget shortfall.
Do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Another DPW request?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to approve the transfer of a sum of $13,129.52 from the Highway Operator Account to the DPW Clerk Account, and the reason is an executive secretary vacancy in training, professional development, is that what that is, to the clerk?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The last DPW request.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to approve a transfer in the sum of $5,000. I lost my spot. To come from the dam inspections account and go to the vehicle maintenance account, again, for a budget shortfall.
Second for discussion.
We have a second for discussion. Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up this issue because it came up at the Finance Committee meeting, and Mr. Croto will probably give me the same answer. If the dams are in a pretty bad shape in town, we're cutting money from inspections. So could you explain like you did for the Finance Committee so that this audience can hear?
Yeah, I was so close to getting through them too. Yeah, so we're mandated by the state to do dam inspections. This year wasn't a real hard hit. The only dam inspection that we currently have to do on a quarterly basis is the dam at Whitney Pond. That's paid out of the money from Whitney Pond at this time. So we don't pull out of the town's portion, we're pulling out of the state's portion. The dams up to the lake are in, they're still considered high hazard, but they don't require as much inspections as they do. Next year, unfortunately, we're back on schedule for inspections, so we carry the money that we carry here. This year, it just wasn't needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, I will, I will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have requests from the Fire Department. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to transfer $2,000 from the Fire Department Subscriptions Account to the Fire Department Overtime Account.
Second, thank you, made and seconded.
I have that for discussion.
Are you okay with a second for discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have a discussion. Mr. Ward?
Okay, I just want to bring this up because, again, this was a big issue at the Finance Committee meeting. Because if you look at all these accounts coming up, there's a lot of them all for Fire Department overtime. So at town meeting for the fiscal year '22, we voted $130,000 for Fire Department overtime. We've already moved $26,000 over for overtime, and now we're being asked totaled tonight, $18,500 for overtime. So the total for Fire Department overtime as of this moment would be $174,500. So Fire Chief's not here. He gave an explanation for that at the meeting, so I'll turn this over to, if you mind, Town Manager to answer that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll speak on the chief's behalf a little bit. So effectively, there's always some reasonable fluctuations in overtime. There are things you can't predict if there are, you know, people out injured on duty or anything like that. And there were some of those situations this year at the Fire Department. When you have to backfill those positions, it typically pushes your existing roster into overtime. I think what the vice chair is touching on though is that number, I think, is a little bit high. And I think Chief Smith is willing to acknowledge that a bit too, and willing to work on that going forward. Another issue is oftentimes, if you can, you can pull in per diems if you can get them. But this time of the year, every department is flat out. Everybody's trying to dump vacation time, and so the pool of available per diem employees that you have shrinks considerably. So it's a little bit of a year-end issue. And I think the best way to address this is to continue to monitor it, to look at historic trends for what we're actually using, and to maybe make some changes to our budget, even though next year's already set. But maybe having a number that more accurately reflects what we anticipate to run into, that's half of it. But I think the other half is an obligation on the side, on the management side of things, for us to try to rein in that cost as much as practical to make sure that we're still staffing our shifts fully. Public safety is obviously a priority, but maybe trying to find more efficient ways to go about doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have another Fire Department request.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to transfer $5,500 from the Fire Department Building Repairs to Fire Department Overtime.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The chair will vote aye. The third Fire Department request.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to transfer $9,000 from the ambulance EMT's account to Fire Department overtime.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the last Fire Department request.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward?
I move to transfer $2,000 from ambulance dues account to the Fire Department overtime.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have two from the Transfer Station.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I move to approve a transfer in the amount of $500 from Transfer Recycling to Transfer Overtime.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the last one, Mrs. LaPointe.
I move to approve the transfer of a sum of $4,725 from Transfer Recycling, again, to Transfer Station Foreman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And that is all. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a discussion on the part-time recreation... on the part-time recreation coordinator position. We've already kind of touched on it, but Mr. Saltback.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll keep it brief. So, the REC Commission is presently run entirely by volunteers, and I think, given the upcoming opening of amphitheater at the Winchonin Community Park, it's kind of been, the need for a part-time role at minimum has been identified to provide not only staff support to the REC Commission itself in a broader sense, but also to help kind of the amphitheater get its legs underneath them so that it can ideally be a self-sufficient, self-funding resource in the community rather than another expense. So, the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation did award $9,700 at my request that would cover that part-time role. It would be 10 hours a week through fiscal year '23. The long-term kind of deal that we ironed out was that as the amphitheater becomes self-sufficient, if the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation can fund half that amount next year, it may be a little bit less the year after, and we'll taper off Robinson-Broadhurst and start working in town funds as the town funds become available. The one piece that I wanted to touch on for this, and we'd gotten into it a little bit when we did the reorganization or restructuring of the Planning and Development Office earlier in the year, was whether or not this rose to the point where it would be considered the creation of an agency. I know that was something that had come up and we had discussed, so in my interpretation, where the REC Commission already exists and it's providing staff support, I personally don't view that as the creation of an agency, but I'm only one person in this room, and I wanted the opinion from the board, and we can also get legal counsel's opinion as well just to make sure we're covered. I want to make sure we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. For the upcoming year where it's grant-funded, technically this individual is a consultant, and not so much a direct town employee, but it's a little gray, and I just want to make sure that we're kind of doing it all on the up and up, so I would like the board's opinion on that, and I have included a preliminary job description in the packet. That's something super baseline, just something to start off of, and ultimately, I would like to get the input from this board, input from the REC Committee, and then also any input from the general public. But I think Vice Chair Ward touched on it, and I share a similar view that the intent and the hope would be in the long term that this role would grow. I think feedback that I've received from citizens and members of the community and different players in the community is that they want to see more of these events happen. They want more recreational outlets available in the community for the youth. They want it more for the residents in general. People have talked about potentially bringing fireworks back annually, things that used to happen, you know, throughout the '80s or '90s or early 2000s that kind of fell by the wayside. Part of that is funding contingent, so it's, those are all nice to haves. And if the money isn't there, then the money's not there, but if we can try to find creative ways to identify revenue streams that would support these initiatives, and that would make Winchonin an even better place for people to live, and better place for families and the residents, then I think in the long term, that would be a good thing. But I think growing that role slowly in a smart targeted way, in a stable way, is probably the best bet over the next three to five years. But with that said, I think I've talked about it enough, and I'd like to hear what you all think.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Okay, I will start. I think you are creating an agency. Since the Recreation Department does exist, it is an unpaid volunteer-only organization that works within the scope of the town. So, I guess my question is, and I felt like you had said that maybe this would go on, you know, because it is paid this year by Robinson-Broadhurst, but would it go on the warrant at town meeting should the town be interested in making a permanent position?
In future years, would it?
After this year.
That's my intent. So, starting fiscal '24, if we continue to grow this, pretty much the second the town starts directly funding any portion of this, it would go on the warrant. And so, it'd be available for debate at town meeting. Not the most controversial topic, but you never know, there could be someone out there.
It's really not, but I'd just like to be open and above board.
Well, to provide the opportunity.
And not just as a line item in the budget, but have an article just demonstrating that you have created this new position, or this position has been created and have the townspeople vote.
I agree.
Anything further?
I think, my other question when I was looking at it is because, and I can't even find it now, but you said you posted it internally, and I'm wondering why only internally right now?
So, we haven't posted it yet because it's in draft form. I want to try to incorporate feedback from this board and from the REC Commission. So, where it's, technically, it's not a town role, but I want to go by using the same playbook that we use for anything else, so it would more than likely be a union position once the town starts funding it. So, not this year, but next year, and I want to make sure that we lay the groundwork with the unions to ensure that we're not taking any work or it's not perceived that we're taking any union work in any capacity. And so, with that said, when there is a union role, we do have to open it up. I think it's a seven-day advertisement period internally first, and then if it's passed over, there's no interest, then we open it up to the general public.
I'm not sure that qualifies, really.
What's that?
It's, I think it's...
A courtesy, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We have people at Town Hall. Maybe someone would be interested in moving into this type of position.
Right.
So, it's a courtesy, I think, to our employees.
But we don't know what kind of talent we have available out in the community either.
That's true.
That might be interesting. You know, like I see, like, media talent in different corners that might be their little niche, whatever, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Anything further? All right. I'll start with that one, all right.
Did anybody have any other feedback for the job description? You can email me.
Well, what I already said.
I received.
I find this very clerical, and down the road, not next year or the year after, but I still feel in time, we are going to need to hire a REC Director for the town of Winchonin if we want to get the full benefit of that amphitheater and all the other things we have to offer, because part of our master plan is tourism, and if we don't deal with that, we're overlooking a major source of income for this town. So, just my, I see this position being a permanent position down the road, and more than just clerical.
All right, moving on. 8.1, water sewer operation RFP update. Mr. Saltback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just as an update, the RFP for Water Services for the Ashburn-Ham-Winchonin Joint Water Authority has been released, and proposals are due on July 21st. There's a copy available in your packet. There will be interviews of interested firms. It's going to be held in late July within a board anticipated for early August. We'll bring all of that before the board well in advance. The contract itself would begin on October 1st and would run for a five-year term. Separately, for wastewater services, where that's not a joint situation, and it's just us, we are in the process of securing a firm to develop an RFP for that purpose as well. In discussions that I had with Director Crotto today, who has done a lot of heavy lifting on this, and I thank him for that, there were conversations of if it, if there may be a benefit to us going out for wastewater services after the fact, which is what we're doing, because at that point, if there's a new firm in place for water services, it's more appealing to them to try to secure both operations just from a staffing perspective. There's a cost savings to them. So, we may end up on the standalone wastewater services getting better bids in, potentially, down the road, but that's something to look at. And so, we expect that one to be released for late July or early August with responses due by the end of August or early September. And another note is, and we had expressed it previously, but that contract is expiring faster than we're able to turn around the RFP process. And so, they had requested a six-month extension, and we are actually in the process of investigating if we could just do a three-month extension. I think, rather than extending it longer than we have to, it'd be my preference to do a three-year extension, and then if it's needed, they can make the case for it.
A three-month extension? You said three-year.
Oh, excuse me, month, yes.
Okay.
A three-month extension. And then if we get to the end of that and it's determined that there's still a need to extend, well then, okay, they can come before the board, and we can review it, but it just seems needless to do six months upfront.
So, three months would take us to end of September, and you anticipate having the RFPs out and responses back by the end of August? Is that time for early September?
It would be a quick turnaround, but still doable.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
I don't want to give them an extension at all.
We have to have somebody run it. If there's no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I motion to authorize the Town Manager to enter into an extension with our existing wastewater plant operator, not to exceed six months, with the intent of allowing adequate time to complete a comprehensive request for proposal process.
Seconded.
Thank you, maiden seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain?
I said aye.
Thank you. All right, so it does pass 4-1. All right, next, a continuation of something I had brought up at our last meeting, the minutes. I just opened up the, went to the town website and opened up all the board minutes, and chose the first one in the year that was not a joint meeting or any such, and came across the minutes of January 24th. So, in your Dropbox is the original minutes as presented and approved, and then I had gone through them and applied Robert's Rules to most of it. There's still some more in here than Robert's Rules suggests, but we obviously have the final say of what we want in our own minutes. So, I'll just open up to the board for questions or comments.
I'll start.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson. What don't you like about it?
I don't like it because, going by what you did, and even going by the minutes that we're supposed to be releasing tonight, I was looking at those, and I'm like, no, no. And let's just look at the ARPA funding, because that was the only one I could remember.
Look at what?
The ARPA.
Okay.
8.1.
Yep.
Because that was the only one that, like, rang a bell in my head.
Sure.
That I could remember. And when we're talking about the ARPA funding, you know, it states that the Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Kane, was present, and he spoke to the issue.
Correct.
He had a lot to say to the issue. He had a lot of concerns, and they were valid concerns. You know, and at some point, when you're doing your research, you've got to be able to look it up, to go back and look it up, and say, what were his concerns? Did he ask the right questions? You know, what were the questions being asked? And, you know, what were his issues? And I can't tell by looking at the minutes. And even if you say, well, then you go check the video. Well, our video archives don't go back as far as our minute archives. The videos come down much sooner because it takes more memory on the website. So, that's not always an option. And then, I wanted to also ask, how long do our videos, you know, could I get a copy from the December 8th, 2015 Board of Selectmen video?
Yes.
Because the minutes, I didn't think reflected enough on that particular meeting, and I wanted to go back and watch.
More information, sure.
And those aren't there on the website. You know, not all videos.
So, if I may just, yeah, Mrs. Daigle, so how are those videos preserved, and how long, and such like that?
So, currently, Madam Chair, we actually record them to a DVD at the same time. Eventually, that's going to be outdated. We do have the file saved in two other ways locally, and then with a company that holds a cloud service for the DVR service, but that company's changing. So, we're looking to get all of those videos, not way back, because we don't have them. We do have it on DVD, but not in MPEG format. So, we are saving them currently in multiple ways.
But...
So, if you ask for it, you'd be able to get it, as long as it existed.
But, yeah, and what if it didn't exist? What if something happened? You know, and that, those minutes are a legal document. This is how we do research, or people at home who have an issue, whatever it might be, this is how they do their research, is they look up the minutes and what was said and what questions were asked. And if it's not there, we really have no record. And nobody wants to sit through a three-hour-long meeting that happened five years ago. I know I don't. It makes me crazy.
Anyone else?[1606.54] Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I'm sort of halfway on this one, and I, I agree with Barbara somewhat on this. For example, if we all praise Robinson Broadhearse, there's no need of a transcript of everything we said great about Robinson Broadhearse. All we need to say is, the board praised Robinson Broadhearse. However, when we did the transfers, using that same logic, you could go in and say, the transfers were all approved. That makes it seem like there were no questions. However, I raised a lot of questions about the overtime funds for the fire department, and those should be in there, even though it shouldn't just be, the transfers were all approved. Somebody should be able to look back and say, yeah, but there was a concern about that overtime. So I, I tend to agree somewhat with Barbara on that. I want some detail, but not when it's, when it's an overwhelming, if we're praising people, we don't need to hear all the...
Right.
We just need to hear...
The board said thank you.
But if somebody like Tom Kane has some real issues from the finance committee, those should be there for the public to see.
And enumerated.
Right.
Because he had several.
So.
And, and only because, hey, wait a minute, you know, like, next year, it might come to me that say, oh, I think he asked that question, and I want to look real quick. I don't want to watch the three-hour video. But I want to look real quick, didn't he bring that up? And, and what was the response?
Okay.
So it really does go to concerns, is, is always what I want to see documented.
Okay.
Concerns and questions. Like, sometimes I'll ask the town manager a question, and he has to say, I'll get back to you. Doesn't know, which is fine, but life happens, I'll forget, maybe he forgets, and I have to go, did he ever get back to me? And maybe he did make me dinner, but that's the only way I can find out if he got back to me.
Amy, any thoughts?
I just think we need to be consistent, so that if we're going to go into great detail, we go into great detail over every item, rather than picking and choosing, because the person who's doing these minutes, something they view as being important might not be. So, you know, we can't expect that of the person. And I think as long as they're accurate, I'm fine. So, that's my thought.
One second. Danielle?
Yeah, so, I mean, I can certainly recognize both sides. I can see how it's incredibly cumbersome for somebody to have to, not right, type out detailed.
Transcribe.
Detailed.
Yeah, the transcribing, the video.
On the other hand, having those minutes detailed have benefited me and this town greatly in the past, and if, if they didn't exist, I think that's a problem. I think we have to find kind of a middle ground to do it detailed, but effectively. Like, maybe we can, so like, looking at the department update from the building commissioner, right? We went from a good paragraph...
What number is that?
Uh, six point one.
Six point one.
To, to one sentence, where it just says, Building Commissioner Jeff Newton presented his report, Newton was thanked by the board. Maybe we can put a link to the report...
And that was the other part.
In the minutes, so then people can dive in on their own and get more detail. If there's a way to provide the information without having to do a full transcription, let's do that and take some of the burden off.
Right.
Yeah, I'm thinking also, like, especially with the town manager's report, there's no need to have it entered into the minutes exactly as presented, just the town manager presented the report, here's the link to the full report if desired, or something like that.
Yeah. Or, you know, just like if they're looking it up online and it's in the blue, we all know it's a link.
So don't we upload all the information for the meeting prior?
I'm sorry, speaking to the mic?
We upload all the information prior to the meeting. Like, everything that is presented in our packet is online. So would that, would that be different than the link that you're talking about?
Yeah, put the link in, like, for, for example...
In the minutes itself.
Yeah, the community...
In the minutes itself.
The community park PowerPoint would be nice to have.
Is that hard?
As a link.
Well, it's just like, we're, so if we already put that information on the website, then you want us to, and then link it to the document as well.
For the minutes. Because otherwise, people have to shuffle back and forth on our, our website, you know, gets a little...
Yeah, hard to do.
If, if I could just add the...
Mr. Saltzback.
Sorry. If, if we're uploading the entire packet that has all that supplemental information with that meeting date, then if people are looking at the minutes from January 24th and say, oh, there's a report reference, they could just as easily just go get that packet off the same place that they got, it's right, their links right next to each other on the webpage, without having to embed a link every time. Because I, I think if we're doing that, now we're getting into the cumbersome thing again, where it's like, we're hot linking every, every time a report's referenced in the minutes, and I'm just thinking, like, for Tamara's behalf, I would go absolutely crazy.
It is in the Dropbox, that's true.
Maybe we could add some verbiage to every minute, like, at the bottom or a footnote or something, reminding people that the documents are on the website, directing them exactly where to go.
Mr. Romanowski.
I just had an idea, thinking about this, being an old IT guy. You can get software that will take a recording, a voice recording, and transcribe it digitally into words, that you can then index and search for, et cetera. And that might be a way, if you have the whole transcript of the meeting, then you might be able to, if you have the minutes that are much shorter, say, like, eight point one, you could have it indexed eight point one, then you could go and look at the, the transcript for that section and get all the detail you wanted to. Or you could even put links in the minutes to the sections. That might be worth pursuing. I don't, I'm not sure how expensive it is.
So you might, if, if we have a software that takes the audio recording and actually transcribes it, you could search that transcribed document, there'd be a search box, and you can put in water, or saltzback, or whatever, and it would find every hit in that document. Hmm.
Or even if it created an index with the sections of the meeting.
Right. Interesting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
All right, well, that's some, some thoughts. One second, Barbara, Danielle, then Barbara.
In the interim, if we were to go something like that, maybe in the interim, though, in these minutes, to be able to, to reduce them, maybe we could, and I don't know how hard this would be, could just put, you know, like, for boards and commissions, you know, six, not even necessarily six point one separately and six point two separately, but put a reference to the time in the video where that section starts? Would that be difficult? Probably. I'm asking your opinion because I value...
For me, it's just consistency, what you guys want to see, because it's, it's what Amy said, like, we need to pick, what are we going to do either way?
Right, right.
And I don't, I think it's, what Barbara's saying is very relevant when we do that, but it's still on discretion of one person, which is me, deciding which is, what is going to be relevant. There's other people, there's three other people that look at the minutes, and then we have to change them three different times, because they thought something else was relevant rather than what I, what I personally thought. So, and to make it consistent, we, we kind of need to pick, like, what, what way we're going.
Understood.
And I don't mind doing either one, just...
Sure, as long as everybody's on the same page.
Uh huh, that would be great.
Okay. Well, we've got, if there's, oh, Barbara, you were going to say something.
I'm, I'm just wondering where you find it, if you're looking at a past meeting. Like, I can find all the stuff you uploaded for tonight's meeting, but I'm looking for a past meeting, and I can't...
And we haven't done that in the past.
I can't find that. So if I'm looking for a presentation from two months ago, I can't find it.
You could request it, right? It's always available if you needed it.
Which would be why the link right in the minutes would be helpful.
Okay. Jane?
I have a solution like Dave has, which I think makes a lot of sense, but I hear a lot of reliance on the town website, and as someone who has a great deal of experience as a researcher, the town website is all, pretty much a useless tool to search for information on. I don't know what it is about it, but it's very, very hard to find information on it. I don't know in terms of how it's organized, and it, it feels like it was just set up as some kind of filing system, but without a sense of how to access it. And so at some point down the road, if we're going to go to all this effort to make things, you know, so what you're trying to do here, I think you're going to have to address the purpose of the town website and how it can be improved, so that people can actually find things on it in a logical way, because that doesn't exist right now.
I, I would agree, now that you've brought that up, yeah.
It's a reality.
It's very hard.
I was on it this afternoon, trying to find something, which reminded me.
Okay. All right, well, definitely some food for thought. Do we want to, what do we want to do with this issue?
Well, I...
Bring it back in a couple weeks and just see if we can...
Um, right now, I'm, I'm just, I'm more in favor of keeping it, making sure, you know, that, you know, clearly, like Mr. Ward said, when we're praising anybody, you know, the board expressed their thanks, and the board, you know, welcomed, whatever. But concerns that people bring before us, or concerns and questions that we have, those need to be documented.
So, does that make sense, Tamara, as far as, you know, Labrie said, thank you Robinson Broadhearse, Anderson said, thank you Robinson Broadhearse, everybody says, thank you Robinson Broadhearse.
Yes, you don't want that in there three times. I've got that.
Okay.
Even though we do.
That makes sense.
And we'll continue working on how to, I, I, and I tend to agree that the Robinson, Robinson rules is a bit bare. I, I do agree with that. So there's, but we'll keep working to find some middle ground, and find, looking at other ways to tie those, the reports and the videos and everything into a more user-friendly type thing.
Right.
Okay.
Only because, and it is difficult to navigate that website, it really is.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Daigle.
I have a suggestion for the documents that you might be looking for. If you look at the top of the minutes, there's always a list of all of the documents at each meeting, and you'll see next to that, the word attached. If the word attached is there, when I file your minutes in the book, those documents are attached to it. So my thought was, when we load it up to the website, maybe those documents that say attached would also be uploaded along with the minutes.
That makes sense to me.
That way, they read the minutes, the documents that are attached. Like, I wouldn't attach, like, the license renewals tonight, or the, you know, the constable application, but things that, and, and maybe that can be a decision you make when you see the minutes, you could say, well, I see, you don't have this one attached, and I would like it to be, that's an easy fix at a meeting, to just then scan that in also, and have the town clerk store it that way, and also on the website.
Yeah.
And in the book.
I think a good rule of thumb is somebody's personal information doesn't need to be attached.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, but you never know who wants to maybe be a friend of the park and wants to look at your PowerPoint, and, you know, if that was attached, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. It's a work in progress. All right. Anything further on this, or can we move on? Shall we move on? All right, old business. Uh, sorry. Town manager's report. Mr. Saltzback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items of note. CARES funding, which was the first federal stimulus package that was released in response to COVID-19, has officially been closed out for winching in. It's certified and complete. And our year-end procedures continue with final transfers to occur before July 15th. So at this point, a lot of things have settled, but there's always a couple outstanding. On the personnel side of things, interviews were held today for the vacant treasurer's position, and it's our goal to have that role filled prior to the end of July. Posting will be advertised internally for the part-time rec coordinator role, once we finalize that description, I would anticipate in the next two weeks. And we are continuing our review of the planning and development director role, and we'll have an update at the next meeting. For project updates, the redevelopment authority will be hosting a walkthrough of the Beach Street property on Monday, July 18th. That meeting is open to the public, but the structure might not be, depending how it looks inside. So stay tuned. And paving season continues throughout town. Mellon Road was paved on Monday, the 20th. Thank you, once again, for Director Crotto for being there. And we are working to use our funds as efficiently as possible, and this includes efforts to push up our paving schedule to avoid increases in material costs for the next fiscal year. So, for example, if there's an instance where we can use, you know, if we're, if there's a piece of equipment we are slated to purchase, but we're not getting that piece of equipment until later in the year, then using those ARPA funds instead for road paving, because the cost of road paving is cheaper now than if we waited until the new numbers come out. So things like that, we're trying to be as efficient as possible. And then I just wanted to thank our Office of Planning and Development and the Rec Committee, DPW, and all of the departments and boards that contributed to the Food Truck Festival this weekend. It, it was really good. I, I swung by really quick with my wife and son, and it was just really good to see, and there were so many smiling faces, and there was one gentleman that was in the line I was standing in, who was talking to one of their friends and saying, oh, they, they should do this every weekend, this is great, why don't they do this every weekend? But it's, the answer is...
If he's going, no.
Right? The answer is that there simply just aren't enough volunteers. There, it was such a small group of people that put in so much effort to make that one day happen, and I think sometimes people forget that, that these things don't just, they don't just show up and appear. It's a lot of work and a lot of effort from people, so please volunteer, and maybe we could do these things more frequently, but please, please volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments for the town manager on his report?
I didn't see you there. I missed you. I bet you were in line.
Yeah, I didn't see you.
You didn't see me? Rick saw me.
I saw him too.
I had a Red Sox hat on, I was, I was hiding.
Incognito.
Yeah, incognito.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzback. All right. We do have before us this evening one set of minutes, that is the June 13th, 2022, our regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to approve the regular Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for Monday, June 13th, 2022, as presented this evening.
Second. Thank you, made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion?
I would like to discuss them.
Mrs. Anderson.
Only because, while I was reading it, if, if you look, and, and again, and this is where, I, I had come up with the link thing too, with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, who had a great presentation for us. But, you know, if somebody who was researching that would have no idea what was on that presentation by looking at these minutes, so if maybe we linked them, that, you know, somehow, it would, it would be a little bit clearer. And then the other thing, only because now I'm pinpointing, because we were discussing it, when we were discussing the minutes, it just says that you brought up changing the minutes, but nothing else about it. And, and, you know, where I think, you know, that I had concerns, you know, should have probably been put there, and we tabled it for future discussion, because it's really just left...
Sure.
Where somebody who might be, for whatever reason, researching that, wouldn't know without watching the video and sitting through the whole three-hour meeting.
Okay. So perhaps on, okay, that is, that's seven point one. If we add the vote and the most relevant details pertaining to the meeting, this issue will be brought before the board again...
Yeah.
For, for further discussion.
There were concerns, and the issue would be, will be revisited.
Okay.
Something to that effect, only because it's just left.
Yep.
No one knows.
Something like, you know, there were concerns, and this issue will, will be brought back before the board for, for the discussion? Something like that? Okay, so that was six one. And then, on the master plan, I'm sorry, that was six one. Could we put, add the link to that PowerPoint?
Is that possible? Or, or do it like you said, when you upload it?
So it's part of the packet. So anything is possible, but I think part of the conversation is like, how, how much staff, time, and effort are, you know, and it, there's a bit of a scope creep that I feel like happens there, but it, that, that Master Plan Implementation Committee presentation was part of the packet. So if somebody was reading the minutes and they came across, and said, oh, the Master Plan Implementation Committee had a presentation, and they're, you know, they had a PowerPoint, just look at the packet for that same data, it's in there, all of it's in there.
But the problem, the problem is, what if they missed it, and you can't go back and look at the packet?
Do we get, do we get rid of the packets?
So could it be attached, when, when these minutes are uploaded to the website, you were talking about attaching things to, to the minutes?
I can attach the presentation.
And just attach the presentation to the minutes?
That's, that's what I'm trying to explain to you, that, that when, you can't go back and look at last, last month's agenda with, with all of its attachments. It's only on for tonight. There's no going back.
Madam Chair, I, I believe you can go backwards in the calendar on the website? Yeah, because you would, sometimes you need proof that something was posted, so you can go back. I believe you can go back.
I've gone back before, but now you have me questioning myself.
Anybody could access that.
We'll, we'll look at it, but I'm of the belief that the packets are always there.
Yeah. Perhaps for, for this set of minutes, if we're able to attach the presentation to the minutes when they're, when they're, you know, just in parentheses, see attached, or something.
Okay.
You know, the, the presentation is attached, something like that. Would that be okay?
Well, I, I feel like they did so much work, and they're not...
Yeah, no, they did.
To have one sentence or two sentences in there really isn't doing them justice.
Okay. All right, were there, anything else on the minutes?
May I ask a question? Is there any way that we can check our data about how many people actually do frequent our website and check this information?
Hey, I do it all the time. You want to check me? I will tell you, I go back and research stuff.
No, 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 I'm talking about the actual people that traffic our website to look at the minutes. Yep, yep. So like, you're saying all these people that were missing, like, if we, if they actually are actually looking at it, I, I find it hard to believe. Like I said, for like, the videos that we do when we're posting, I've had to switch them to go to YouTube now, so you can see exactly how many people view the meetings. It's like 13 people. So I'm just curious, if we looked at the minutes, like, where we post them, to see exactly how many people do traffic our website, to look at that information, to see if that's really beneficial of our time to do that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, no, if that's, Dawn could, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to say, I can speak to that a little bit, because a, a parallel issue is ClearGov, which is a, a great...
Nobody looks at.
Nope. I'm getting there.
Sorry, sorry. I'm a little antsy.
So, it's $5,000 a year, and it's a great resource. It's fun... It's fun to click through it, but on a hunch, I asked ClearGov to run the numbers for us to see how many people actually use it, and I think it came, it was, I think it was six people. And they can break it down to like, how long people spend on individual pages and, and things like that. So it's a great tool to have, saying, you know, "For the sake of transparency, oh, we're transparent. You can look, you can see how the budget breaks down and everything." But it was actually six people that used it, and honestly, I, three of them are probably sitting in this room right now among those six. So I, I think, to Tamara's point, some people do, do look at the minutes, but I don't think they're, they're banging down the door to look at them. And, and, in my experience, if there's something that I want to find, I'll find it. If I need to prove a point, or say, "Well, I did say that," and I want to go, like, I'll, I'll find it. So it's, I, I get both sides of, of the issue.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Lapointe.
I don't disagree. I think the other thing to think about, though, is these functionalities are more used when there's a problem, or a perceived problem, or something that somebody needs to research. If people feel we're doing our jobs well, and they trust us, there's not as much of a need to go look at the stuff. But when something comes up and people want to figure out what has been going on, then it does need to be there. It needs to be available. It needs to.
That is, that is the other part. You don't know you need to find it until you need to find it. When, when something, and it's always when something goes wrong.
I know.
Okay. Well, obviously, we'll be talking about the state of the minutes more, but for this evening, we have this one set of minutes before us. It has been approved and seconded as presented. We've had some discussion, and we will continue to discuss it. But for tonight, I'm going to call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Opposed? Abstain? Was that an aye?
I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you. No communications. Our next meeting on July 11th, is a quad board meeting beginning at 6:30. Attorney Rosali will be present in the audit committee to present the FY '21 audit. It's proposed that we meet at 6:00 to take care of anything that would require our attention and not the quad board. Questions, comments about meeting at 6:00 on July 11th is the quad meeting at 6:30?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
The only concern I have is we tend to cram too much stuff in 30 minutes. And I know we did have a joint board meeting where we had the school committee and the finance committee sitting here for almost 30 minutes beyond 6:30, because we couldn't get our stuff done. So if we're going to go 6 o'clock, we have to end at 6:30 for the time that that quad, quad board meets. So we'll have to postpone until the end of the meeting if we haven't covered it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Or the next day.
Or the next day.
If the meeting goes too long, we don't want to be doing it.
Yeah, I don't think the quad meeting's going to go, well, that's what I said about tonight. I'll take that back. Okay, I, no, I agree. Whatever we're doing as a board, 6:30 comes, we've got to go to the quad meeting, and then at that point, depending on how much we have, we can determine if you want to just go back in session after the quad, or push things off. Okay. So 6 o'clock on the 11th for the board meeting, July 11th, and then 6:30 for the quad meeting. All right. We do have two executive sessions this evening. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to enter into executive session 13.1 under exemption number three, to discuss